The town of Cicero Planning Board, thank you for attending. Couple, three housekeeping notes before we start the meeting. Please note the location of the emergency exits. There's one in the back of the room and there's one on your left in the front of the room, should they be needed. If for any reason you can't hear the proceeding, please bring it to our attention. The clerk will make every effort to adjust the audio system so everyone can be heard. That is our intent. And finally, if you have a cell phone with you, would you please silence the ringer? If you have to take or make a phone call, please step into the conference room, out onto the porch or in the back hallway, so that the call doesn't disturb the meeting. And with that, would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Rosino?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public. We wish to change one nation under our God, indivisible, in which we do not interfere with all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the June 6, 2018 meeting. Has everyone received a copy? Changes or deletions? We have a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Card, seconded by Mr. Rosino to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. All those who wish to abstain. There are no abstentions or negative votes, please mark the resolution for approval of the minutes as you name them. Public input portion of the meeting, the board will accept comment on any active application currently before the planning board. Comments must be directed to the board. If comments are relative to an application with a scheduled public hearing, please hold those comments until the public hearing. Speakers must speak from the podium, provide their name and address to the clerk, be recognized by the chair, and speak into the microphone. Comments are held to three to five minutes per speaker. Comments requiring a longer period of time should be submitted to the board in writing for inclusion and consideration and will be placed in the application file. Would anyone like to give the board's comment on an active application in front of the planning board? And we don't have any public hearings tonight, so this is the appropriate time to comment. Evening, Carol.
Hi. Carol Cardy McKinley, Row.
I'm sorry, Carol.
Carol Cardy.
Cardy, C-A-R-D-E.
Correct.
Okay.
McKinley, Row. The zone change on Button Road.
Yes.
Isn't that spot zoning?
Well, that determination will be up to the town board. I'm not sure how they feel about it, but all we are going to be doing is making a recommendation. Again, they sent it back to us, it was pulled off their agenda. We're going to make a recommendation. I think the last time this was in front of us, one of the members commented that they were concerned it might be spot zoning. But that, in reality, the only thing they're sending to us, Carol, as far as to give them a referral back, whether we think it's a good idea or a bad idea.
Well, the spot zoning, they're all against that. They're trying to clear that up.
Yeah, I know, we've done a lot of rezoning.
And it's all residential in that area, and I don't think that would be fair to the people that live over there.
Okay, appreciate that. Anyone else like to comment on an application?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Craig Dillinson, and I'm an attorney. I represent Peter and Kathleen Kope, and my business card for the clerk.
Peter and Kathleen, what was the last name?
Kope, K-O-P-E.
Thank you.
Okay. The Kopes have asked me to present to the board tonight their objection in opposition to the proposed zone change at 8533 Button Road, which is located diagonally across from their property. Their objection would be to any zone change that would permit the construction of anything other than a single-family residence, because this neighborhood is predominantly single-family residential. Some of the concerns that my clients have expressed to me include the additional traffic, the noise and side effects, such as the dust that could be involved in a lengthy construction project with multiple family residences. Once completed, that dumpsters, which might attract rodents and insects, might be located outside the properties. And they've expressed a real concern about snow removal. If there are going to be parking lots at this development, where would the snow actually end up possibly out into the street, obstructing the other neighbors' ability to traverse the streets in the winter? Again, my research indicates that the area is predominantly single-family residential, that there's only two other multiple-family properties in that particular neighborhood, and they were constructed sometime in the 1960s. One is a small 1,700 square foot ranch house that is at 8536 Button Road, and it appears to be a single-family home from the outside. The other is at 8434 Button Road, which is a 2,200 plus or minus square foot raised ranch that's listed as a three-family. Again, these were constructed according to the records that we reviewed back in the mid-1960s, and there hasn't been any multiple-family construction conducted in this neighborhood since that time. I contacted the town and got from Mr. Procoprio a copy of the draft comprehensive plan, which I understand was not actually formally adopted by the town, but it does give a lot of insight and thinking to the particular uses that the town envisioned at the time that that plan was developed in mid-2000s. And reading through the comprehensive plan, it's pretty apparent that the town and its engineers and residents spent a considerable amount of time and resources studying and developing the comprehensive plan for the town. So I'm under the assumption that the town is somewhat guided by the comprehensive plan in making its decisions on various projects.
You'd hope so.
Okay. Well, in any event, I brought some excerpts from the comprehensive plan with me tonight. If I might, I could hand them out to the board just for your...
If we have the notes, I think Neil, the appropriate thing would be to file them with the clerk, and then the clerk will provide each of the members with a copy.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. And I also brought the map, and I had the map enlarged. I don't see a place where I could actually set this up, but the point I'm making here about the comprehensive plan and the map, which is the future land use map that's contained within the comprehensive plan, is that in this neighborhood, there's no indication that it was envisioned by the planning board or the town board that multiple-family dwellings would be permitted in this neighborhood. There's a legend on the map, it's color-coded, and I looked at it very carefully and see that the nearest multiple-family use that was, again, envisioned by the town is located a considerable distance from here. So I can file this with the clerk and the copies of the maps that I brought. And in closing, I just would request that the board consider my comments and the comments of everyone for that matter in making its decision. And, you know, I'd like to put on the record that the Kopes do object to any approval or recommendation of an approval that would allow the construction of anything other than single-family residence in this neighborhood.
Lisa, you have that for the minutes.
Okay.
Anyone else who would like to comment on an active application or action before the planning board? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Charles?
Just one second, I'll grab the...
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Charles Eastwood, 8428 Button Road.
What's your last name, I'm sorry?
Pardon?
Eastwood.
Eastwood, oh, easy enough.
Like Clint.
Gotcha.
Go ahead, make your day. I live on the farm that was previously my grandfather's and then my father's. And with the high-speed traffic on Button Road, I understand the apartments were going to be for senior citizens. I feel that this would be a very dangerous option for... And I'd wholeheartedly like to keep a single-family, because toward radius of a half mile, all the tracks, Lake Shore, Delin Meadows, Fisher Track behind my house, they're all single-family.
So Lisa, have we shown Mr. Eastwood as opposed?
Yes.
I'm all set.
I'm all set?
Okay.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board regarding an active application or action? It's pending.
My name's Jim Bombar, I live at 8514 Button Road.
Lisa, did you get that?
Cross the street, two down from this plant. Lived there 55 years, seen a lot of change in 55 years. When I was a younger man, I used to come here and complain about it and try to do something, but I learned, you people are going to do what you want to do, it don't matter what we say. But I used to ask this question, and I can ask it again, when's enough? When is it enough inconvenience for the people to live on that road and pay taxes?
Sounds like if you need to oppose it, you gotta stand up, right?
Or if you want to speak for it, it's not a totally negative process. If somebody wants to speak for it, they're welcome to do so.
Well, my husband and I are opposing.
Okay. Thank you. I want to ask, I assume you're coming up front, Doc?
I'm trying.
Okay.
I live directly across the street, and definitely oppose it, especially the drainage. Where's everything going if they put something in like that? And everything else has already been mentioned. Sadly, I'll look at that if you let something go like that.
We will, just so everyone's clear, the planning board has to make a referral to the town board.
To the town.
The town, because it's legislative, we're actually changing a law. All we were giving them a referral, so even if this has been in front of us once, we did not give a positive referral. Town board asked us to look at it again, which is what we're doing, that's our job, and so we'll go back to them, but they will ultimately make the decision. It's for them. I just, so everyone's clear, if the planning board says no, it really isn't on our field.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to let my, you know, opinion go.
And it will be noted, and I explained to them, we're going to send all of our findings, all the denials and opposition, anyone that's for it. We have received letters in support of the project. So all of that will be forwarded on to the town board for them to make a decision.
Will we be letting know who approved, or who sent the letter?
Would, well, yes, the town board sends out notices if they're doing zone changes, and I think you'll find that we're probably going to take some similar action, and we usually go further in our notifications.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
How come I've never gotten a notice of any zone change?
Excuse me, sir, you have to oppose. If, we only do notices if the town, if the planning board does public hearings, and we don't do the whole town. We do the affected...
Across the street?
We haven't had a public hearing yet, sir, but if you want to speak to the board, you have to come up to the podium and be recognized. Would anyone else like to address the board regarding any active application or any pending action? With that, we'll close the public comment portion at 6:47. Lisa? First item on our agenda is site plan for J&amp;R Lawns and Landscapes at 8076 Thompson Road. They have requested to recess their application. They are not ready with their engineering yet, so they'll probably be on our next agenda. The next item for discussion is zone change recommendation for Michael and Carmen Sesta, 8533 Button Road, agricultural to residential multiple. Michael and Carmen Sesta are here to represent themselves. In the discussions with the town board, what we're proposing is that the planning board is going to hold a public hearing on this project. Assuming I can get the support to hold it, we would hold it in, at our next meeting, and we would carefully record all of the, those opposed, those four. When we send out our notices, we send them out more than to just the adjacent properties, and so after the public hearing, we would hold a discussion and send another referral back to the town board after a presentation. It seems it's going to give everybody an opportunity to either send in their support or opposition, or come and talk to us so that we can note it and forward that finding, our findings there, also on to the town board. Neil, could we get a motion to set a public hearing for this?
Yep, we're going to move for the adoption of a resolution, calling for a public hearing on the matter of Michael and Carmen Sesta, 8533 Button Road, agricultural to residential multiple. Said public hearing shall commence at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard at a regular scheduled meeting of the planning board on Wednesday, August 1st, 2018.
I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
So who's the chairman?
Thank you. Motion is seconded by Mr. Card and Mr. Abbot.
Well, he made the motion.
Yeah. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All those who wish to abstain. There are no abstentions or negative votes. A motion to hold a public hearing on the zone change recommendation passes unanimously. We will be sending out postcards and notices on how to file stuff if you have to by mail, and so everybody has an opportunity to speak and be heard, and we will forward that on to the town board. Next item on the agenda is site plan, Rockland Management LLC, 5859 State Route 31. It's a proposed one-story retail building. Rockland Management LLC will be representing, Steve Calosinos will be representing the act.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, what was your name?
Steve Calosinos. C-A-L-O. C-I-N-O-S.
Thank you.
Here this evening representing Rockland Management. They are proposing to redevelop the existing, or formerly Aero-Autoglass store. Used to be a gas station prior to this, I'm near as a building as we... What you have on the screen right now is a proposed site plan. The proposed building, the existing building is proposed to be torn down, and the proposed building that's going to be constructed will be a 4,974 square foot, plus or minus, commercial building. It's proposed at this time or intended that it would house up to between one and four tenants. There are no signed tenants at this time, but that's the intent, that they would lease out individual spaces to multiple tenants in the building. Based on the size, realistic number, maximum number of 34. The current parcel is about 22,500 square feet in size. This is zoned, I believe, general commercial. General commercial, we do have on the site plan the bulk area regulations, general commercial zoning requirements, the land area is 100,000 square feet. I believe the width is 100 feet and the depth is 200 feet. So this is obviously an existing, non-confirmed parcel. But the coverage limits for GC are 40%, and right now with the building at 4,974 square feet, we're at about 22% of the coverage for the structure on the parcel. The front yard is 50 feet, the building is 72 feet back, so we exceed that. The rear yard minimum is 25 feet. This plan shows 9.93 feet, and this was approved by the ZPA, I believe, at their July 2 meeting.
Richard?
Correct. So they already have applied for variance, and they've granted variance on that. Side yards are 15 feet, and this building is no closer than 16 feet, and that's on the western side yard. There is an existing sewer line that runs along the western boundary of the property and then across the front, and to the best of our knowledge, an easement was never recorded for that sewer, and that's something that the applicant is currently working on with legal to get that easement recorded, so it's properly documented, and the town has access to that.
Mark, did you look into that at all, and that easement, is that the sewer line, do you think, or...
Yes, I forwarded the information on the contract, showing easement, but obviously that would never be recorded.
That's a problem we hadn't asked.
The other line, we checked it out, it wasn't, it was never recorded. We asked the applicant, and they're trying to pay the driveway easement and dictate their back.
Okay.
For this type of facility, parking is at the discretion of the planning board, based on the type of use. So we have proposed 25 parking spots, and again, we're basing that on possibly a maximum of two employees at any time in each of the four spaces, each of the four tenant spaces, that'd be eight, and then a ratio of one per 300 square feet, which is common for a commercial professional services. So it works out to about 25, and that's what we have on site, is 25 spaces, plus a loading space that we show as being striped on the eastern, southeast corner of the building, and again, temporary.
And in regards to parking, just so everyone's aware, I discussed the park, I discussed this entire project on several occasions with New York State DOT. They said 25 parking spaces is, they would be comfortable with that. They, however, along with myself, I'm opposed to doing cross-access easement between the parking lots, given the traffic out front. I know Anna Dott County recommended that. But I know that New York State DOT is opposed to it, and I don't know how the board will feel, but I can tell you, I just don't think it's a good idea to have more traffic movements there. But the DOT was okay with 25 spaces.
Yes, and we've had preliminary discussions with DOT. We have not submitted driveway application with them as of yet. We do have it filled out and completed and ready to go, but we did confirm with them that they would be okay with the number of parking. They were okay with what we were representing as the likely traffic generated by the project and the location of the driveway. There was in the past a second driveway to this site, which was eliminated at some point in time, and we're bringing this current driveway into performance with the existing standards, DOT at this point. So we expect no approval, but we've got to work on the details.
Long discussions, but they, I suggested they also purchase it, but they don't seem to be interested in doing that, so...
And relative to cross-access, again, the Duncan Donuts, as you're aware, has a substantial retaining wall around their drive-through lane, so it's impractical to go to the east and then to the west. It's a state DOT property that's used as a parking right in a slot. It really wouldn't be benefit to provide cross-access there, because it would get real close to the intersection, so we have no intent.
That's, I don't know why Anna Dott County recommended that, but New York State, you know, obviously you have to use the property for something, so they thought the 25 spaces was a good idea?
We are showing a dumpster enclosure at the rear or northeast corner of the building. It's proposed to, again, have two dumpsters inside the enclosure, one primarily be for recyclables, another one would be for waste. And that's really about it. We did receive comments from town engineer who hired me this afternoon. I'm going to leave Mark with a copy of the packet. It also includes the catalog from the lighting that's proposed for the building, and as well as a statement of use that was requested. We're working on getting elevations, so we'll plan on that in the future. Relative to the lighting, you do have one site lighting pole shown on the plan, and if you look, it's on the right side of the driveway coming in, right in that corner. The rest of the lighting on the site will be wall-mounted, wall packs on the building.
Concrete block is in place, there was a question about that last time, so it's shown in here, correct?
Yes, there's an existing concrete block.
It's in the state right away.
Yes, that will be replaced and reconstructed.
And I believe the town maintains it, at least at the present, and they do the snow plating and stuff.
Yep.
Is this a new building or are they using current from the existing building?
It's going to be entirely new building. Existing building's going to be torn down.
Same footprint?
No, the existing building is significantly smaller. It's generally on the right front quarter of the layout shown here, as a location of the existing building.
I'm sure a couple of the members would love to inspect the signage, so why don't you start off and then we can...
The applicant's intent at this time is to utilize the existing sign that's out there and just reskin it, update it, make it look a lot more attractive than it is now, put a, possibly, some treatment around the base, maybe some brick and landscaping around it. That's the current intent. And that's located at the end of the drive aisle on the left side of the site. I think there's a number 13 called out right there, just for reference.
It came in late, I'm Patrick Donaghy.
Patrick Donaghy.
With Rockland, sorry. It came in late today, but I'm working with Dave, the architect, and what we're trying to do is that box, we're trying to create a, almost like a frame, like a mading, like you would matten a picture, with the separations for the multiple tenants and a border around it, and then a brick column that would wrap around the current base with landscaping at the bottom to make it nicer, and also shrink up the actual panel portion of the sign.
That sign is a concern to the members of the board, so as soon as you have that, it would be good to get it in early.
Everybody's so overloaded right now, like, "Got to go, and Dave, what are you doing?" He's like, "I'm trying, I've worked 78 hours, so..." He did send it to me today, at least a sample of what he was thinking he would get it to immediately.
And of course, the DOT's response on the number of parking spaces was sort of their basis on what type of businesses are going there, because your initial sketch showed a Chipotle, and just because you used it, but that almost sent New York State DOT right over the edge. They sent Chipotle there, so...
Sorry about that, it was just a representative photo of a building we saw in Florida, and we literally took the picture and threw it in the packet, for example, those aren't
Steve, do you have anything else at this point?
At this point, that's really it.
Neil, do you have any legal issues that we should be addressing when we start asking questions?
No, they're, we're going to need, we're in the shape...
Mark, do you have any engineering issues at this point?
We've sent Mark.
Okay. Well, any changes that are meant, if we think any, then of course you'll look at the agenda. Mr. Hooper?
Nothing, can I?
Nothing?
Nothing.
Mr. Rosino?
I'm not sure, you said possibly four tenants. Would they, you're required to have more handicap parking than one space?
True. We currently have two spaces.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Would that be, no, I'm thinking four tenants, I don't know if we need...
I think Richard looked at it, that's his code.
Yeah.
I mean, what we're really looking at here is, our understanding is like an edible arrangements, a barber shop or a nail salon or something like that. Getting in and out of that's going to prohibit putting in Chipotle. So, no, so Richard's looked at it, I think, and I think he found that the coat will live...
We educated that last week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Abbot?
Steve, what is the footage of the...
Steve, where's the footage of the front part, kind of this page here?
I believe the width of the building at the front is 95.
Okay.
Or 96 feet. And then that little bump out you see in the northwest corner, and then it comes out nine feet and then goes back 16 feet. So it's overall, we're back 105 feet.
And depending on how many tenants you're able to get, you're proposing all have entrances in the front or front side or?
Front or rear. By codes, you need two means of ingress and egress. So there'd probably be a rear door, there's a side block in the back, and then a front door. So if there's ever a fire or something, you have two ways.
Sure. The front entrance would be the primary customer entrance. The back would be obviously for witnesses.
True. But conceivably could be four main entrances across the front.
Yes.
One for.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Marzullo?
Yeah, got a question. So we're asking to review the site plan with unknown number of tenants going in there. We're kind of relying on site conditions to regulate, follow and that kind of thing. Do we have any options relative to land a tenant? Is a bump going in there? Do we have a chance to review it or are we just relying on market conditions for good planning?
That's the problem for the approval process. Once it's approved, it's approved. And so what you're not going to get is like a conditional approval where you say, okay, we approved this for, you know, this building and this plan, but before we issue a C of R or anything like that, it tells you the tenants, it says we come back to take a second vendor in the outlook. That's a tricky concern of yours when you look at this, you know, whole world kind of thing about what might go in there. Because you're not filling in the blank space. And without those blanks being filled in, you know, you have a lot of things to think about. You think about how many parking spots. Well, there's one thing and there are others as another, and you don't know it. So you're kind of operating in a barrier to a certain extent because you're being asked to get site plan approval without knowing what the actual use is going to be. It's a tricky, it's a tricky slope for you because what you're going to have to do is make an evaluation based on that building and what could go there and how the site works. But for the actual, you know, final tenants, you don't know that. In a lot of instances, you're not going to know that. Because let's just say you gave site plan approval and it was McDonald's and then, you know, two years from now it flips over to some other approved use.
How do we do that with a strip mall?
What's that?
With a strip mall?
Well, you approve it, you approve it as fit and, you know, stores go in and out and you don't know the actual, you know, you really don't know what the final's going to be. So what you do is you do your best, you do your best eyeball up for the site and what that site can accommodate. And so looking at that site, you can't say, well, I'm going to have 500 parking spots. Because you can't, you know? And it becomes a very difficult choice for you. Your point is well taken because some of those uses are way more intense than other uses.
Yeah, if you've got shopping plaza, it's kind of designed for some overflow.
Right.
Here in New York, you've got an existing site, now expanding.
You're boxed in. It is, you know, the shopping plaza example works to the extent that tenants change. But you, when you look at that site, shopping plaza, you've looked at, we do have overflow parking, you do have, you have way more considerations as you go into it. Not a lot of considerations going in front of that, the site is different.
And in all fairness, though, the parking in the site design will dictate the tenants. If there's a tenant that requires large amounts of parking, they're not going to want to look in a place like this.
I get that to a certain extent, but it's not my opinion, that's a good planning. And that makes me a little, oh, no, no.
And like Bederson Plaza that was built down the road next to Wright Ave, they had one tenant for that building when they built it. And, you know, it didn't turn out to be a problem. There's a, unfortunately, situations like this for us as a developer, it's difficult to lease. If you drive by that today or you're bringing somebody by that today, they don't see it. You have to build it. And we're taking the risk to invest in the town and build this new code compliant building up to modern energy standards and everything, hoping to fill it. And the other thing is with a lot of the smaller tenants, it's almost like a compulsive buy. Like they put some at the end of the aisles for people to buy when they're walking by. Like these types of little spaces, like these little franchisees and stuff, they make a decision that they want a space like this. Or a State Farm guy, his lease is up in three months and he's looking for a little spot to relocate to. He can't wait for us to go through this process and come to you and have all the tenants in place to build it. It's just impossible.
I get all that. Go on, my cake, I want to eat it too. Can I sit with you at the table?
I mean, we're putting a considerable amount of risk and money in this. I mean, we might sit on this for two years before we get this building filled up. But I mean, Bederson, a lot of people have sat on space for a long time out here before they finally filled it, so. But we're confident that, you know, with the market the way it is, that we'll hopefully fill it within a year or two, I think, at the most.
You can do an insurance office in GC. So like that kind of thing we could have.
Who's that?
Like an insurance office. That'll work in GC.
And you're seeing a lot more professional offices go into these type of plans. It's like we are renting to prevent aesthetics in Camillus. They do the lipo suction stuff. You've got the Aspen Donald models now, they're all starting to go into more, they want more visibility. So you're really starting to see a lot more of this. And that's what these little spaces are usually filled with.
Like I said, it's exciting to know that something's going to happen there. And this is the only, not a good thing.
And we've got, you can see our track record on Lou 11. Bad Boys Taco Bell, This Is Real Plaza, Firestone, Chase Bank, I mean McDonald's, Salvi Bank. When Starbucks went out, we put Salvi Bank in. I mean, it's just, they're like apartments. Some of these tend, some don't. They might be gone in two years, three years. It's just, it's the survival of the fittest out there.
Right.
Mr. Carr?
I'll reserve my comments until I see your sign package.
That sign was a negotiation. I think Mark and I are the only two that were on the board at the time, remember, they can't.
I might have an idea to run by you, Jason, in that.
I don't have any additional comments. I know how New York State DOT, I mean, has been considering a lot, I've talked about it, but they even considered saying, maybe you should restrict it from food service because of the Chipotle. But I said, no way you're going to, she agrees with me. But she said, and if you restrict it, you couldn't do like edible arrangements, which gets almost no traffic, it's all deliveries.
Those are tenants are really stupid these days. Even the franchisees, like we did a firehouse deal out in Camillus, they're very, they study things, the out of team on a parking. They do a pretty good job of making sure it's going to work for them too. Because if it doesn't work for them, it's not going to work for you, it's not going to work for me, so.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay. How soon do you think you'll be ready to come back with the sign and stuff?
Next week.
We won't be here next week.
So I think as far as giving something, you guys, or if you want, I can sit down with Mr. Hooper and whoever wants, showing you the ideas, you know, like.
Send it in to, if you could, send it in so that we can, Heidi can disperse it to the members.
Fair enough. He comments, I'll see, whatever works for you.
Good luck. Next item on the agenda is a minor subdivision, preliminary and final plan. Sole purpose for the agenda item is to set a public hearing. Neil, could you construct a resolution to hold a public hearing on this at the next meeting, please?
Jeff, you're going to vote for the adoption of a resolution calling for a public hearing in the matter of CES Housing, Ruth and Road, Catchnet Number 1, Tuesday Number 3, 3.5 to 2.0. The public hearing shall commence at 6:40 PM or sooner after this ceremony. And a regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board on Wednesday, August 1, 2018.
That's in the form of a motion. Second. Any? Second. Sir Mark? Mark, I'm sorry to hear. Mark Marzullo, second with the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All those who wish to abstain. Hearing no negative or no abstentions, please mark the resolution setting a public hearing for subdivision issue in Amherst. Next and last site plan on the agenda is amended site plan sketch review for R L B Development LLC, 5857 to 5927 East Circle Drive. Proposed parking expansion, LJR Engineering will be representing the applicant. This is for the Driver's Village Complex over in, I think everyone knows where Driver's Village is. And they are considerably assured of parking, surprisingly. And they need to expand. So it was a modification, it's going to be an amendment to our original site plan. It is my understanding that the Speedy's permit is still in place, Alex, is that correct?
That's correct. The, as part of the original redevelopment of the site, there was a Speedy's permit applied for and we've intentionally maintained that permit in its open status with recognizing that the site would probably evolve over time. So when the Hyundai development went in, that work was performed under that original Speedy's permit and updated to the current standards, which is what we would propose to do here as well.
And you would propose a, obviously we would need a SWIP because it's going to be over acre disturbance on this one part.
Yeah, we're looking at about, per the Speedy's definitions, we're about four and a half acres of disturbance. So we will propose to update the SWIP for the project. There will be stormwater quality provisions provided in accordance with the new guidelines of the Speedy's permit for green infrastructure. Those will likely be bio-retention facilities. And we're proposing to manage stormwater quantity control by creating some additional storage volume on the site in the vicinity of the low-lying area there on the, I guess it'll be the northwest corner, north is to the left on that plan.
Well, this is an amendment of the site plan. There, obviously, when these fees were set up, we were just adjusting minor site plans that did not review, that did not require significant engineering or legal. And so it is an amended site plan. We charged the 500. However, for us to not move it up into a full site plan, we need professional services. The applicant should understand that for the fee purposes of legal fees and an engineering deposit, we would need to use a minor site plan. I don't know if that's agreeable, but that would be, so you'd be looking at a $400 check for legal fees and review and a $1,300 engineering deposit, depending on if it's a full SWIP review or whatever, which I'm sure you'll discuss with Mark, we may require more, but that'll be something that Mark has to see yet. Mark, you understand, but we need professional fees because of the size of the amendment. But we don't have this many big commercial sites to amend, so if I should, sorry, address it.
Yeah, I think both my clients and I agree with that. Alex Wizniewski, LJR Engineering. W I S N I E W S K I.
Please don't ask change. All the applicants are going to be Smith.
Yeah, let it be. Is it all capitals? S P D E S? Thank you.
Stands for Stormwater Pollution Prevention?
Thank you.
Or close to it?
Well, Speedy's, the state league, mischarged.
Okay, that works.
What's the one we're looking? SWIP.
I was thinking Speedy's sauce, so I like.
You're close.
Okay, go ahead.
Not as delicious. So there, the notion here, I think, and correct if I'm wrong, Roger, is there's obviously a need for additional parking on the site, particularly in the winter months with snow removal and whatnot. But the intent is to create some additional parking in the more remote portions of the site that would allow for more display vehicle parking in those areas and then open up more customer parking in close proximity to the building. So that's the general intent. There's really three major improvement areas. The first would be at the corner of South Bay Road and Circle Drive, where we're proposing to expand that parking field that shaded on the plan there. As part of that work, we would widen that main entry drive that comes in from Circle Drive. And then moving down to the west side of the site adjacent to North Hogan, just north of the Hyundai site on the opposite side of that drive aisle, we're proposing an additional display parking field there. And then the large shaded area there just to the northwest of the Loop Road would be, portions of that is currently paved, portions of it is gravel, ultimately that would all be expanded. And then the piece that's behind the used car warehouse would be restripped and reorganized for better efficiency. And then as part of those parking expansion areas, we're proposing to direct the stormwater through new bio-retention facilities that would then discharge back into the, there's an Army Corps wetland that was redelineated last year that's outlined on there. And we're proposing not to impact that at all per the Army Corps requirements. And that's where the discharge from the whole site ultimately drains to, there's a culvert under North Hogan there that continues on behind the Lowes property.
This site only has, because you delineated it recently, I know in the last year, so it only has federal wetlands and that is correct?
That's correct. There are no state wetlands associated with the wetland delineation, so there's no additional 100 foot buffer that would typically be.
There is no buffer required because they are federal.
And then as part of the construction drawings, obviously those wetlands would be protected with steel fencing and center to make sure that there's no sediment discharge going into the wetlands. There are one nuance here. The site is partially within the flood plain and there's also a portion which is generally contained in the area to the northwest of that Loop Road on the aerial. The majority of this area is also considered floodway and under flood plain regulations, which has been asserted locally. We're not able to fill within the floodway proper. So the grading and improvements that you'll see in that quadrant will all be either at existing grade or lower so as not to fill within those floodway areas. So that was a kind of a unique circumstance with the site. And that's generally the intent of the proposal. We are currently working on developing fully detailed site plans so we're able to move forward as the board sees to.
As we're also considering at this point, because it is hard to find the stuff over there, the applicant is including as an amended site plan is going to be submitting a sign package, correct?
That's my understanding. There is an intent for some changes to the signage, if you want to discuss that. I'd have to defer to either Roger or Dave to elaborate on that. Would you care to?
It's in development.
It's in development, I understand. We have an issue where people are driving around and around trying to find the dealership they're looking for. Thankfully, the redevelopment of a distressed piece of property has worked out well. And some of the things that Mr. Burdick's learned from it and some of this over the years is it seemed inappropriate time to also ask to amend the site, the signage, so that people can also find the dealerships and we can stop the circular motion around. So that would be coming to, it is being developed, there's an advertising firm working on it. Alex, anything else? Fairly straightforward, a lot of it seems like it's going to be stormwater with our engineering.
That's, that's.
Mark? Neil? Do you have anything in sketch that you conceive of a legal issue?
No.
Mark is the first blush, but. Mr. Hooper?
What's up?
Done?
Not at this time.
Mr. Reseda?
Not at this time.
Mr. Drabby?
No, the law session will begin right next in what night?
Mr. Marzullo?
Yeah, I think at this time, I'd like to point out, you know, the South Bay, East Circle Drive intersections, you know, pretty active, busy. And it looks like for some, after the improvements for some vegetation, something, right now it's going to be open green space. And I understand we need more parking, but let's see what is going to happen there relative to landscaping.
Yeah, if you're, I don't know how familiar I am with that corner, but there is a, there's a row of deciduous trees that flank Circle Drive. a, there's a row of deciduous trees that flank Circle Drive, those would all remain. And then as you come around the, the entryway from Circle Drive, that, that median that contains, I think it's Bradford pear trees, those would all remain. And then we're essentially wide, we're going to push, as you enter, on the left-hand side, that median's going to shift over to create a thirty-foot wide drive as you, as you enter, and the trees will be replaced in that new median. There is some additional green space, there's, there's, you know, a sign at that intersection, I think, that we want to give consideration to if we're talking about additional plantings, but there, there is some more residual green space that we could, we could look at.
Good. Perfect, that's all I have.
Mr. Card?
How many existing parking spots are there currently? About a dozen.
I'm not sure if you can answer this better than that. I did a little research, tried to piece through all the old plans, but, and I think if you exclude, if you exclude the Toyota BMW Lexus site, which is a separate parcel, I think there's on the order of twenty-seven parking spaces. Does that sound about right?
Twenty-seven.
No. Twenty-seven hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred. And with these changes, we're going to net about an additional four hundred spaces.
From that drawing, that's all you're ending is four hundred?
I thought it's correct. There's, there's a little illustration on the site data table there that kind of breaks down, we, we added X amount of space, but in so doing, and creating, there's a new designated drive aisle that's heading towards the, is that the Audi store on that?
Yes.
Heading towards Audi there, we're trying to create a designated drive aisle there, which lost some spaces, so there, there are some spaces lost to, to redevelop the plan in a more organized fashion.
So you'll net around...
We're netting about four hundred additional, so...
And you're going to provide us eventually with a signage package that we'll have to... Do you plan on adding any additional handicap parking?
I, that wasn't our intent, only because the, the space that we're adding, our intent to be for display purposes.
Right, but I mean, when you, one of the reasons that you're doing this is to provide more customer parking up front. Okay, so when you're developing, having, looking to provide customer, there are going to be, there's a lot more handicap people out there today than there was...
It's a valid point. I, I'd have to revisit our original design, because then, obviously, the, the total number of ADA spaces is related to your total number of spaces. So if our new threshold pushes us up, we can, we can reconsider that, but, I mean, the intent isn't obviously to create new spaces near the building, we're just trying to open those up for customers.
Correct. I'm one of those customers, but anyway. But I'm not handicap, yeah.
So it's a park...
No, no, no. It would be nice for the, for his, you know, for his customer, providing more.
All right, I'll note that and take a look.
How much, how many people are employed at Driver's Village now? I heard a number that was over five hundred.
Five seventy-five.
Five seventy-five.
Well, twice what we had when we moved in.
It's, it's great business for us, but I'm glad that you need more parking. It means you've got more business. I don't have any other questions either. We're going to, you'll be in touch with Mark regarding the storm water, that seems to be the first consideration. I know we may have to keep this open for some signage issues, so that we, before we do the final approvals, but if we can expedite the storm water, as Mr. Hooper and we discussed, and we get the approvals and everything done, we may be able to allow the construction of the parking lots, knowing that it's winter season coming. And while the planes are open to get that before we go. So that's what we would look to be doing, as early as our next meeting. It seems fairly straightforward, Mark is at a logical thing, that we would be able to do those reviews between now and then.
I can have you your package within a few days.
Uh, you go around, see what you can do, yeah.
Okay. So we'll all work toward that, and we'll try to get you back, so...
So I'll put on my calendar, August one to, is that?
When's the next meeting, Lisa?
August first.
August first? Okay.
Great, thanks for having us.
I'll do what we can do.
Thanks, bud.
Thank you. That concludes scheduled items. The only remaining item is board discussions. We may have groundbreaking as early as next week for the enterprise facility, they're closed, they're doing the clearing. They called me with a concern today, is they, they can't, they want to do landscaping from like eighty-one through the fence, so we're going to try to help them with getting access so that they can landscape their rental truck place that we approved. And there is some other activity in that area, so we're going to try to make it look nicer, but we've got to get the state to agree to let them do it, and they can do it at their expense. There's a lot of stuff circulating, but nothing substantive, yeah. Mr. Resedo, do you have any comments? Mr. Abby?
Call set.
Mr. Marzullo?
Call set.
Mr. Card?
And as I am.
And as I am. We have a motion to adjourn.
What's that motion?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Card, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Abby. We are adjourned.